For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alt, Mr. Beistel, Mr. Calero.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
Mrs. Shipley.
Here.
Mr. Benz.
Here.
Taylor Sifos.
Here.
Sage Gwynn.
Here.
Let the record show that Mr. Alt contacted us and indicated that he had a work conflict this evening.
Citizens comments?
Merritt Bailey. Just for the participation of everybody out in the audience, everybody watching on TV, rules for participation in citizens comments as per the current board policy 06 and 903. Please be advised that citizens comments is your opportunity to present your information to the board in regard to our agenda items and or sophomore in schools. It is not expected to be a dialogue between you and the board. Do not expect any remarks or responses to any comments that you make today. It is our intention to take these comments seriously and resolve such matters as deemed necessary. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. Also note that we will not permit any statements that exceed five minutes. You will be notified when you have 30 seconds remaining to speak. We also cannot permit any statements that are personally directed or obscene, abusive, or irrelevant as decided by the presiding officer. All speakers must preface their comments by an announcement of their name, address, and any group affiliation if appropriate. This is to ensure that only sophomore and citizens, or those deemed as such, are speaking to the board. Thank you for your interest in sophomore in schools. Thank you.
My name is Merritt Bailey. My address is 719 Pittsburgh Street. I have one student in the district at the moment, and I have two that have graduated from this district. And I would like to speak to you this evening on the safety in our schools. I want to take a moment to illustrate some of the issues many parents are concerned about at this moment, and give you some perspective, and offer some suggestions, so as not to only deal with these concerns more effectively as they arise, but also to avoid them in the future. First, I'd like to say that I have a friend.
Could you pull the mic just a little bit closer? There you go. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah, much better.
A friend of mine, her son was one of the critically injured students at Franklin Regional. So I have a slightly different perspective than many parents that you will hear from. But this incident this week gave me a new appreciation for what those parents have gone through. The feelings of helplessness and worry were overwhelming, and no parent ever wants to get a phone call or a text like that from their child. Many of us experienced those feelings on Tuesday and Wednesday this week, and I'm sure we are all holding our children a little tighter today because of it. As I'm sure you're aware, rumors of more bomb threats and shootings are running rampant on Facebook, Twitter, and a variety of other social media sites. Many parents turned to those sites for information when they found the school district site lacking details that they needed for reassurance of their child's safety. One result of this information was panic both on the part of the parents, as well as of the students. I must say that with my personal connection to the Franklin Regional event, I was a parent in panic. While neither of these threats were actually realized, they do call into question the safety of our schools, the training of students and faculty, and the efforts put forth to avoid these situations in the first place. I'd like to address all of these topics. As the owner and director of an early learning center in the area, I am well aware of the precautions necessary to keep our children out of harm's way on a daily basis. I have to prepare for every emergency possible and train my staff and students, no matter how young or old, how to react in each situation. We have not only fire and tornado drills on a regular basis, but intruder and lockdown drills as well. We notify parents when we run a drill as soon as the drill is complete. Our policy is to notify each individual parent in the event of an actual evacuation as soon as we have reached a safe location. One of the concerns voiced by parents was the lack of information and the delay in the delivery of that information. Many school districts, Hemfield being one of them, have a robo-call system to notify parents when there's a significant event at one of their schools. South Moreland does not. My husband is a teacher at Hemfield High School, and when the recent bomb threat went to Hemfield, I received a call. I received one at my home and one at my office when the evacuation was in progress and when it was completed. I didn't worry when I got that first call because I knew I was going to be updated as soon as they were safe. I just waited for the second call. South Moreland would be well advised to install a similar system to help avoid the panic like we experienced this week. When I spoke to both Mr. Krafcek and Dr. Molnar regarding this week's threats, the response I received was that it was on the Scotty Channel and the website. Well, for most parents who work, we don't have access to a television, and some of us cannot get to a computer all day long. Not to mention the fact that not until about 2:45 was the information on the website anything but vague. In light of little or no information, where else are we to turn? From the student and staff's perspective of the evacuations, they had never practiced what to do in the case of violence, or an intruder, or a bomb threat. They had only practiced for severe weather and fire. They had no idea what was going on. Many were panicked, and those people were some of the ones helping to disseminate the misinformation. Training the students and staff in what to do in such events helps alleviate some of the panic and allows them to feel more secure. In addition, as they waited for the building to be cleared, there were only two staff members for the entire sophomore-girl class. In times of heightened stress, the staff-to-student ratio should have been elevated. It should have been increased to help alleviate some of the students' worry. It is a shame that we have to plan for these types of events, but in this day and age, it would seem the question is not if something will happen, but when. And as an individual responsible for up to 50 children and 11 staff, at any time on any given day, I would rather be proactive than reactive. I've lived in some of the country's largest cities, seven years in Philadelphia alone. My husband was a teacher in a number of inner-city schools, and we never experienced these types of events. And you know why?
30 seconds.
Those children live with violence every day. It's very real. It's not an abstract idea. Our children in this little quiet town, violence is a game. It's how many people can I mow down on my Xbox in 90 seconds? Our children need to be educated, not only on gun safety, but bullying and staying safe in the event of an emergency, and how their actions affect others, and how to avoid these in the future.
Thank you. I have to call the policy. Majority of the vote. Have a motion. Do we have a second? Seconded. Voice for the other. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. I just had to follow call soon.
Okay. Thank you. An example of one of the types of educational programs that's available is called Rachel's Challenge. Rachel's Challenge was started by the Scott family after their daughter Rachel was slain in the Columbine shootings. Rachel's Challenge helps enlighten students to the very real repercussions of violence and helps teach compassion and kindness, which many school districts are finding are they're drastically reducing the levels of violence in their schools, and it's helping those at-risk students who are considering taking their own lives or that of another person. Lastly, I would like to address Dr. Molnar's response to my query for metal detectors or wands and guards to operate them and ID people as they enter the high school. Right now, our buzz-in system does not work. It does not protect our children in any way. And a bomb-sniffing dog, once they leave the building, is not going to find a weapon on a child. His response was, "There is not enough money in our budget." Well, I have two things to say to that. If there is not enough money in our budget, why are we throwing out reams of paper and boxes upon boxes of pencils and all sorts of school supplies to buy new ones? These are perfectly good. Don't tell me there isn't money in the budget when we're throwing our tax dollars away. Now, I'm not a betting woman, but I would wager a guess that if you polled every parent in this district right now, if they would pay more taxes or even donate money to keep our children safe, that you would get a resounding yes from every single one of them. My understanding is there are very few children, well, 50 percent of the kids that attended the high school today. My daughter was not one of them. Ladies and gentlemen, a fearful environment is not an optimal learning environment. If something is not done quickly, the school district is going to find that children are dropping out and enrolling in cyber school or other more proactive districts. The question we really need to be asking is, are our children's lives worth it? I know your children did not go to South Moreland, Dr. Molnar, but mine have and do, and I will not put a price on the South Moreland student's safety. Are you going to? Thank you.
Thank you.
It's recommended that the board approve the minutes of the January 8th and January 15th, 2015 meetings.
Need a motion? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes eight zero with one absent. Business and finance fund accounts?
It is recommended that the board approve the January 2015 Treasurers Report and the January 2015 Bills Payable.
Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. Appointment of deputy tax collector?
It is recommended that the board approve the appointment of Lori Hanschaw as deputy tax collector for Everson Borough.
Need a motion? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second. Second by Mr. Beistel. Questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. Old business, elimination of reduced-priced breakfast?
It is recommended that the board approve retroactively to the beginning of this month the elimination of the category reduced-price breakfast at each of the district's school cafeterias, and that those students who were formerly receiving a reduced-price breakfast will now receive a free breakfast.
Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Miller, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. New business, gasoline and diesel fuel?
It is recommended that the board approve the following bids awarded for gasoline and diesel fuel for the 2015-16 school year for the school district's quantity request to the following vendor, whom the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Joint Purchasing Consortium for Fuel has identified, ports petroleum as the lowest responsible bidder or equaling specifications for gasoline, eighty-seven octane at a fixed rate of $1.81 per gallon, and for diesel fuel at a fixed rate of $1.96.91 per gallon.
Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Shipley, second. Second by Mr. Calero. Questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. 2015-16 school calendar?
And before I read the motion, you do have four options for the school calendar, and I will explain those options to you. Option, the original option, is the option that I presented to you last week with the first day of instruction for students being August 25th, and the last day of instruction for students being scheduled for May 25th, with May 26th the snow day number one. Spring recess would begin on Friday, March 25th, under that particular plan. A second option, it was called to my attention that the dates for the county fair have changed for this year, and we do have a number of students who show animals at the fair. So the second option that I presented to you would start the school a week later, August 31st, on Monday, and this particular option would move spring, our spring break. Snow day number three would be Thursday, March 24th, which is the Thursday before Easter rather than the Wednesday after Easter. And then our last day of school there, last day of instruction, would be scheduled for Wednesday, June 1st. Option three, which is the blue sheet that I gave you, and there is a typo on that, I apologize, first day of instruction would be Thursday, August 27th. Again, we would have Thursday as snow day number three, and our last day of instruction then would be scheduled for May the 27th.
What was the first day of instruction?
August 27th.
Which sheet is that?
That's the blue sheet, and it's a, there's a typo, Mr. Miller.
Sorry, I didn't hear that. I wasn't listening. Thank you very much.
And then option four would be the same as the original proposal, with the exception that snow day number three became Thursday before Easter. So any of those options would be available for discussion.
August 27th is the first day, and then what was the last day?
On the blue one?
Yeah.
I think we had the last day of instruction scheduled for May 27th.
Okay, so it's still done before Memorial Day?
Right. Assuming we don't have a snow day, snow day number one would be May 31st.
Right. What are, what are other, I mean, you mentioned the fair. What are other things that parents or, or people think about when they, when, you know, in choosing one of these? From an academic standpoint, what one is, do you have any recommendations? I mean...
Yeah, based on, you know, what I found out with the fair moving, you know, I would probably recommend either option two or option three. Option three does get us, you know, assuming no snow days, and does end school before Memorial Day. It doesn't provide the whole week for our students who are showing animals, but it gives them, you know, at least part of the week, which is Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, where they wouldn't be missing school.
It gets them out a little earlier in the spring. Right. I'm only concerned about alluding at the very beginning of school, that school will be over by Memorial Day, seeing that if we don't have a school day, sometimes then you'll have lots of people planning vacation based on the fact that school's supposed to be over before Memorial Day. At least this one gives us a little bit of leeway that they would have to realize that they still would have, still would have school after that point. Right? Agreed with? They actually have a day of instruction after Memorial Day?
And now looking at option two and option three, I sort of lean towards number three just because I've heard over the years that the staff thinks it's a good idea, especially for the younger ones, to not have a full week of school. And option two has a full week of school for the younger ones and everyone else, but option three doesn't, so I didn't know if that's something to look at.
Like, that's a good point that I didn't point out, but it certainly was a consideration for option three.
So they'd have two days that week, the little ones.
Yeah, right. Then next week they have Labor Day, so they only have four that week, so it's kind of gradually working their way into it.
Dr. Molnar, when that was brought to you about the fair and entrance of their animals into the fair, were there many students, or were there just a couple? Was it a...
I don't know the number, but I know we have...
Significant number? I mean, we're not talking about one or two here, we're talking about more than that.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
This was not a problem last year because of the way Labor Day fell, the fair was earlier. This year it's moved back.
Anybody want to throw out an option, or anybody have more input? Just to, Mrs. Love, do you have it?
Well, my kids are kids that will be in the fair, and they won't be at school in three days if we go with option three. You know, they work tirelessly for months to go to the fair and do 4H, and that's where they'll be. You know, they have animals to take care, they have animals to feed, you know.
Do you have any idea how many kids? District one?
Between horses and steers and pigs and cows, and, no, I, you know, my 4H is in Scottsdale, and there's 20 to 25 kids in it. I don't know how many go here, but I know there's a lot from the high schools that are involved with steers and pigs. I don't know how many there are involved with horses, but I can tell you that my kids won't be here. They will be at the fair. Sorry.
Just to refresh your memory from last week, Mount Pleasant was starting on the 25th. Yawk and Greensburg Salem were planning on the 26th. I don't know that these were adopted yet, but that was what their plan was. Kent Trafford was the 27th, and Hemfield was the 31st.
Would three help some in terms of at least having two days, two more days there?
It all depends on what animals you show. Olivia will be showing on Friday, so it's not going to help her. Thursday she has showmanship, and Friday is the big show, so she, you know, Thursday and Friday is her two biggest shows. So no, it's not going to help. You know.
Does this need to be voted on now? Can we do some kind of a poll that's going to make decisions in the district? Will we table this till next month if you'd like?
What's the consensus of board? Do you want to table it till next month? Is the number of kids that are involved in 4H and any other things, or you want to vote on it tonight?
I think, I mean, again, I'm not sure how much gets done the first two days of school here, so I'm not saying that we don't do some academics here, but, you know...
Quite a lot, actually, Mr. Calero. We do a lot of, a lot of our preliminary assessments happen during the first week of school. Rules, handbooks, all those housekeeping chores that have to happen generally on the first day of school, and we move into, write into pre-assessments. So there's actually quite a bit that goes on that first week.
I'm thinking that it's an accommodation to those that do show animals, rather than, I mean, we said we didn't want the younger ones starting a full week, so I think that schedule is one that we would not like to follow, starting on the 31st, which would start them on the Monday. And the 27th gives at least some accommodation for us as a, as a rural community. I mean, we do bill ourselves occasionally as that. Am I correct, Mr. Miller, that we say that and we receive grants on the basis that we're a rural community? So I think we should at least make some accommodation for those students that are willing to participate in the fair and...
For the last two years, they've started on Mondays, though.
We have.
I know, because I've left the fair on Saturday and went shopping Sunday, and I'd be in school Monday.
We're an agricultural community, and your biggest industry in this school district probably is farming. And these kids have a big interest in the farming industry, and I think we ought to accommodate them because it is an education to them. It could be their livelihood down the road. So I think we should really consider this. That's my opinion, so.
So do we want to vote on it tonight, or do we want to table it till next month? Do we have a motion?
So you would be proposing, Mr. Beistel, you would be proposing, then, which, which one are you proposing there?
Option two.
Option two. Is it, is it a, if we, this would necessarily be setting a precedent. Is the fair going to stay late like this, or is this a one?
No, no.
Okay.
It's up to the fair.
Okay.
You know, they could change it every year. Maybe they could change it to accommodate enough.
Yeah, Labor Day's late this year, so I'm thinking maybe that's what happened.
Labor Day's late this year.
Yeah.
It's not an option for five of us, but I thought the option of starting September 1st, which is a Tuesday, which accommodates the fair, accommodates the kids not starting early, and if we extend the end of school one day to June 2nd, that's a snow makeup day anyway. So... Is that a viable option?
Oh, it is, unless, like, you remember last winter, we had a pretty rough winter, and we were here until the middle of June, and we ended up going to using some of our in-service days as act 80 days, and so on and so forth.
That's bad.
Yeah. The later we start, the later we go into the summer, especially when it's a tough winter like that.
I can support either the 27th, the Thursday, or beginning the following Monday. I do think there's, I mean, I agree, we're a rural community, and if, I'm not, I suppose, you know, just be kind of the other side, if we go too late in the year, there are also disinterest, you know what I mean? If they hear that Mount Pleasant is out and the like, and so, I don't know, administrators, you'd have to talk for that, but that's probably also a downside to go too late, so I don't know.
Yeah, when I developed the option, I didn't realize when the fair was, or I'd have done things a little bit differently. You know, the other thing is, you know, there's a window, we'll go back to your conversation of last week's about our high-stakes testing, you know, so we try to keep, we want to get as much instruction in as we can, but yet on the other hand, we have other important things that go on in the community as well. We do.
What are you folks thinking over here to say something? Oh, I can say that. I think we need to support the... Okay. I'll support that. No question. Okay.
Just to refresh my memory, when does the test of the primary school start?
I believe they are starting on that.
Throw a motion out there.
The 25th, I believe. I don't have that folder with the Mississippi.
I'm just curious, what happens when the different schools start at different times like that? Our students are going there...
Yeah, some of the students opt to go to their tech classes.
Okay, so they can do that? Okay. You know what? Under those conditions, can I make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the one that's, we'll start on the Monday. That's option number two.
Option two.
Option two.
We have a motion for option two?
Oh, sorry.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second by Mr. Beistel. Questions or comments?
And the only thing with option two, that does, you know, we lose that one week of instruction, so we're clear on that.
Yeah, I don't know that by saying it, Jack, that the board fully understands what you mean by losing a full week of instruction, is that all of the assessments that go into what we're held accountable for, PSSAs, Keystone, school performance profile, all of those things are getting that testing window April, so, and whatever you do is fine, but I just want to make sure the board understands that by going from August 25th to August 31st, or whatever that is, we, curriculum-wise, we lose a full week of instruction. Because anything, the instruction that occurs after the testing window is important, and there's good learning going on, but none of that will impact what we do for the things that we're held accountable for. And I just want to make sure you have that information, understand that. Obviously, it's your decision, we'll follow whatever you decide.
I guess, I just need a clarification on that. On the option three calendar that we're talking about, we would start on Thursday, and the one that we presented today, I mentioned we would start on Monday. I only see a difference of two days. What you're saying about losing a week of instruction, am I...
Well, from the original proposal.
Oh, oh, okay. From the original, I understand, from the original proposal.
In a perfect world, the Department of Ed would give us our testing as late in the year as possible. They don't do that. They drill it right, and you know, at the end of the third, nine weeks at school, at three-quarter mark of the school year. I just wanted to make sure, you know, that we're still there.
As a matter of fact, some students are, our English-language learners are being tested now. This is their testing window.
Any more questions or comments? Do the students have anything to contribute to this? Okay. Roll call please.
Mr. Polakowski. Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Colero.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Benz.
Yes, motion passes seven, one and one absent.
And that was option two, correct?
Correct. No child left behind resolution?
It's recommended that the board approve the no child left behind resolution as presented and will be attached as part of the February twelfth, two thousand fifteen minutes.
Need a motion?
That was distributed in your packets.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Miller. Questions? Roll call, please.
Can I just, yeah, Ms. Shipley said something at the end. I don't want to put you on the spot necessarily, but you're a teacher and we're talking after. If you want to say something, this is a fuller statement. And by, by the way, just in terms of politically where this is, I find this an interesting kind of a, as I've read the literature, where people who are for decentralized local government tend to favor decisions being made locally. And at the same time, many teachers and teachers organizations feel that there is too much control in regards to the teaching for the test. And so I think it's an interesting conversion and I hope, hoping the revision, this takes some effect. You said, if you want to say something.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Anybody else with comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Colero.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Benz.
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. Early retirement incentive?
It is recommended that the board offer an early retirement incentive to members of the Southmoreland Education Association for the terms and conditions of the Southmoreland School District Retirement Incentive Plan two thousand fifteen for teachers.
And this is coming from a committee, so any questions, comments, discussion?
Get a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion for?
Still move.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second. Thank you. Second by Mr. Polakowski. Now questions or comments, discussion?
Yes, I think the amount that we're offering is probably too high. If we're looking at when the last incentive was given, it was twenty thirteen. We're giving them a twenty percent raise over that period of time. And if we look at it and say, well, you know, they didn't have one for all the years that we did that, I'd say, then do we go back and give all those people extra money because they were disadvantaged by the fact that they didn't get a significant increase over what the original incentive was? I think if you look at the incentive, if we're going to give that, I don't think it should be any more than five percent of what that amount is, which would be the two years from twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, which would be at most another thousand dollars, not thirteen, eleven, five at the most. Like I said, that's a twenty percent increase from the last incentive we gave.
For the sake of clarity, when I drafted this, I put a lot of brackets in with the intention that the committee would review it and decide whether to keep those items in the brackets or to change them. And in certain places, there were blank spaces. I think it's the intent of the motion that the brackets are actually, should be removed and what is typed there would stay in. That being the case, the minimum participation number required that's inserted here is eight. That the deadline is April first for the offers to resign begin and that the board shall have till the tenth day of April to declare whether or not there's the required minimum participation. The plan sets forth, the minimum age is fifty-five and ten years continuous with this school district plus twenty years overall under Peasars. And the dollar number is thirteen thousand dollars per year for six consecutive years. Again, the bracketed date for the first payment would be the first payroll date of July. I don't know if the treasurer has any qualms about that, but I just wanted to draw attention to that as to whether that's an okay date for making those payments. And under certain circumstances, a person can become disqualified in section eight in the event that they were terminated for cause or convicted of certain crimes in the interim.
Either reason why we use April first, that was just an arbitrary date, do we still?
I didn't pick it, I don't know.
Is there a reason why, I mean, is that just a date we picked or is there some requirement that we have to give them so much advance?
Well, we need to have a budget in place by June thirty. April first tells us, it gives us an opportunity to plan, to budget in terms of, you know, how many new employees we might have, how many positions we might be realigning and doing things differently. So it just gives us a little bit of time to plan and budget.
Normally, you would, you would want to give forty-five days notice, especially if you were requiring a release. We're not requiring a release, but I think that there still should be adequate advance time for the person to have considered it and consulted with whoever their tax advisor is or whatever.
That's what I'm thinking, what would be reasonable in forty-five days is what would be normally?
I think that's sort of a minimum number.
Yeah.
Any more questions? Dr. Scott makes a good point as well, depending on, you know, what our staffing is going to be for the following year. Then we have some curricular decisions we need to be making as well in terms of curriculum and plan.
Actually, I wasn't thinking moving in terms of back, I was thinking moving forward. But again, forty-five is a reasonable amount of time for them to make a decision, consult with their financial advisors, and that's fine, April first is fine. I just wanted to know why we had to pick that date, but that's, yeah, I don't have a problem with that. No, I'm done, go ahead.
Mr. Miller, go ahead.
A question on the remuneration and the thirteen thousand. A number of schools, neighboring schools do this and they, and as I understand in the background, my understanding is that this is to help a teacher who's fifty-five years old or sixty years old or older, but an incentive to have help and insurance and benefits during that period of time and an incentive and it's done with. And as I understand, our making a flat fee or a flat allocation rather than actually paying for the insurance, which is guaranteed in some district, has actually in the past worked out for a lesser cost to the district actually than paying for the insurance. But you can correct me on any of that, but what I'm interested in is saying, someone saying a little more on how the thirteen was arrived at or just comment a little bit on that.
Yeah, and Mr. Marnell can address the insurance costs and so on. We talked about thirteen thousand because, you know, we're obviously trying to incentivize some of our more highly-paid teachers to exit the profession. In looking at our demographics, we have four teachers who will be sixty-two, five who will be sixty-one, three who will be sixty, one at fifty-nine, two at fifty-eight and three at fifty-seven. So in order to, you know, help with those insurance costs, that's where we got there. Mr. Marnell, husband and wife policy costs approximately?
Currently, that policy is one thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars per month.
Per month.
So annually, that comes out to?
Fifteen six.
Fifteen six?
Rapid math, good. Fifteen six. So the thirteen?
So that's in part sort of the thinking in that?
That's the thinking, yes.
But again, my point is that we have, we have paid the same, based on that, that philosophy of trying to help them pay for their insurance, we have done that in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, two thousand and thirteen, and we've never really changed the amount, am I correct? At least over the last few years, we haven't changed it. And I'm not adverse to giving a little bit more, but that seems like we're trying to do catch-up. And the intent here, I don't believe, is to simply pay all of their health insurance just to incentivize them so that they can pay most of their health insurance. If our intent is to pay all of their health insurance, then I think Levi's comment about the fact that some school districts pay all of it, then why are we looking at that? I said, I just, I don't understand why we're, we didn't do that in years gone by. Giving them an increase is fine, but like I said, a twenty percent increase over the last incentive seems rather high.
In two thousand and six, on the incentive was nine thousand nine hundred. Then it went to ten thousand two hundred in two thousand and seven, and in two thousand and ten, it became ten thousand five hundred.
And then two thousand and thirteen, same figure, ten thousand five hundred?
Yes.
I said, I mean, again.
Yeah, and the other thing that we, that we kind of looked at is in terms of years of service. An individual who completes forty years of service would retire at full salary if they were using the multiplier of point oh two five, which most of our employees have. Right now, our most senior employee at the conclusion of this year will be at about thirty-six years. Goes down to about thirty-four years, thirty-four, thirty-four, thirty-three and so on down the line. So that was another thing that we looked at in terms of offering the incentive.
Probably even the smallest, even with the least amount of years, they're probably going to get seventy-five percent of their salary.
I didn't.
Yeah, again, even if it's thirty years, it's seventy-five percent of their salary. So, and you figure they're getting seventy-five percent of their salary, they no longer have social security to pay, they no longer have state tax to pay because it's not taxable. That's a ten percent increase right there in their pay. So again, as I said, I'm not against giving an incentive, I just think that we're giving more than we probably need to give. But that's.
Since when we did this before, do you know, and I may have missed this, what are, what the prices of health insurance have, what the increases have been, the percentage?
Anywhere from three to seven and a half percent per year.
Per year.
Right. Is that correct, Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
I actually have that on a spreadsheet with the figures, but I don't have that with me.
I'm just trying to figure out if we're equating.
Sure.
You took the three percent for the last two years and only did a six percent increase?
Right. That's why, what I'm asking, he says between three and seven and a half percent. So that's what, like, what has the last couple of years? I know health insurance hasn't increased tremendously.
Yeah, the last couple of years have been a little bit lower and it depends, because we're in a consortium, a rate stabilization consortium, a lot of that depends on our experience level in a given year. So, you know, if we have a good year and people aren't submitting large claims, then our rate-setting committees, you know, will set that at a lower rate. However, if there's a year where there, you know, are a lot of individuals who have high claims, serious illnesses, terrible accidents, things of that nature, then our rate would go up a little higher for the next year.
Then I have one other question, and it's about this, but kind of when Levi was talking about us paying for benefits, the school districts that continue to pay for their, those benefits, are those employees still under their plan? So would their, would their, the things that they would, would they fall under those kind of things?
Mr. Marnell, can you address that? I believe that could be the case. Districts who are, who provide post-retirement benefits.
So then those claims?
Do they generally provide the same benefit as was provided pre-retirement?
And do those claims then fall under? So if we would continue to offer it that way, if there was huge claims with those individuals that were retired, that would come back and impact us?
Yes. That was actually negotiated out of our contract. At one time, we did provide that, and I want to say maybe three contracts ago, that was negotiated out of the contract.
So looking forward for our protection, it is better for us to go this route?
Wait, wait.
Most of those retirees that you had in the past are still in our group insurance plan. They're paying the premium. We pay the premium to the consortium, so those retired employees are reimbursing the district, but their claims experience are still part of the health.
Now, would that be like that with this group? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, many of our retirees use Cobra and make payments to the district.
So it's not, it's not advantaged insurance?
It's not advantaged, yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I think this, all I can say is I think this has been a good deal for our district financially, and I gladly support the recommended motion here that's on the table.
We have a motion and a second, so we can vote on it? Any more discussion?
Just initially, when I, when I first looked at this, I thought it also was a lot of money additionally to pay out. However, when you do the math, the difference between the ten-five and the thirteen thousand looks to be about a hundred and eleven thousand. So in the scope of things, I don't know, it's, I agree with Levi, I think you save a lot of money by offering the early retirements. And like I said initially, it sounds like a lot of money, and I'm not saying that it's not, but when you look at the scope of the budget and the amount of money that we'll save, I think maybe it is worth to go, go the extra, I'd be willing to support the thirteen thousand or if we wanted to lessen a little bit, I'd be willing to go with that, too.
It's kind of a gamble, you know, the money that you mentioned is a substantial sum of money. Having said that, if the extra money gets two or three more individuals to retire, then, you know, and you don't know that, that's that crystal ball that we don't have. Well, we're requiring at least eight. I've heard that number tossed around, but I don't have an official number.
Not an official standard?
Right.
Jack, just so that we can get this on the record, I know we have the figures here, I'd like to enter it on the record of the amount that if we had eight retirements, the amount that would be saved over that six-year period.
Sure. This is using the thirteen thousand figure, since that's the motion on the table.
Of course, then the question also would be, you know, if we can get eight teachers to go and retire, then the question would be, how many of those are we going to replace?
Right.
Because that would depend on.
That would depend on who retires, yeah.
Retires, right, right.
And what positions become open.
So that's something to take into consideration also.
Right. So the figure that I'm going to give you is assuming that we're going to replace all eight, okay? So in year one, that would be a savings, and this is after the incentive is paid, it would be a savings of two hundred twenty-three thousand, six hundred twenty-three dollars in year one. And that savings, you know, based on, on the assumptions that I made when I did this, based on what I estimated salary increases to be and increases in insurance and so forth. Year, again, year one would be two twenty-three, six twenty-three, and after six years, our savings would be one million, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars. If we replaced seven instead of eight, year one savings would be two hundred eighty-six thousand, five thirty-three, and our total after six years would be about one point nine million dollars. And obviously, the less, the fewer teachers that are replaced, the greater the savings to the district. When we're looking at who to replace or what positions to replace, obviously, there's a fine line between finance and curriculum, you know, there are things that need to be taught and taught well and taught in reasonably-sized classes. And that's always our goal, to make sure that happens as well.
But you basically presented the minimum savings we would have.
Yes.
By giving us the eight and eight replacements.
Yes.
So we have a motion, we have a second, any more discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
No.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes seven, one and one absent. Middle school boys' baseball team?
It is recommended that the board approve the start of a middle school boys' baseball team with the beginning of the two thousand fifteen spring season, using volunteer coaches until the sustainability of the program is determined.
Need a motion? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
The Southmoreland Senior, Senior High School family and Consumer Science Program has a few openings for our Tuesday, Thursday preschool program. Children should be four or five, with up-to-date immunizations, applica- applications are in the senior high school office. Open house will be February twentieth from approximately eleven-twenty to twelve-twenty. Email Susan Ansel for more details at ansels@southmoreland.net or call seven-two-four-eight-eight-seven-two-zero-one-zero. The following books have been donated to Southmoreland Administration, to, by, by Southmoreland Administrators and Board of Education to Southmoreland Senior High Library in memory of Brendan B. Walter, graduate of the class of two thousand fourteen. Coldest Girl in Cold Town, Before I Fall, The Fifth Wave, Eleanor and Park, Midwinter Blood, and Inhuman. The following books have been donate, donated by Southmoreland Administrators and Board of Education to Southmoreland Senior High Library in memory of Lawrence E. Cravis, father of Tanya Ripple. The Star Won't Go Out, Grace Earl, Miss Peregrine's Home for Peculiar Children, Orleans, Selection, and The Test, Testing. On Thursday, February nineteenth, the annual Valentine's Dance will be held at Southmoreland from six to nine, dressed as semi-formal. And attached are the current gems lists for the high school.
Uh, four, four teams of Southmoreland Alpha students participated in a game board design competition held at Burl, uh, High School on January twenty-second. They competed against teams from Burl, New Kennington, Arnold, Mount Pleasant, Penn Trafford, Yoc, and Manessin. Our smaller team was blended in with one of Manessin's smaller teams to create one full team after two hours of designing and creating a board game. In an hour of playing and evaluating other teams' board games, the winners were announced. Third place went to the team of Jacob Smithsola, Josh McHugh, Ian Zimmerman, Brendan Hickson, and Alex Posado for their work on the game A Day in the Life of Mankind. Second place went to the team of Haley Rollinson, Max Zimmerman, Mackenzie Blair, and Madison Bodenheimer for their game A Day in the Life of an Army Men. In first place went to the Southmoreland team blended with Manessin's team for the creation called A Day in the Life of a White Girl. Southmoreland took first, second, and third places. Congrat- congratulations to all of the stu- Southmoreland Alpha students on an excellent job at Burl. Alpha students that participated in January twenty-eighth Mount Pleasant Quiz Competition did very well. The varsity team took third place for the conferences, with Michael Conroy receiving a trophy for highest individual high score. Uh, the junior varsity team took second place during the conference play, with Alex Posado receiving a trophy for individual high score. Southmoreland varsity team consisted of Captain Sage Quinn, Michael Conroy, Beta Farino, Samantha Gray, Hudson Nicholson, Anastasia Polakowski, Taylor Siploss, and Stephanie Wells. After fierce battle with Ligonier Valley, they respectfully earned third place in the quiz team tournament. The Southmoreland Junior Varsity Team consisted of Alex Posado, Charles Eckard, Kira Nicholson, Haley Rollinson, Jacob Smithsola, Tessa Wilkins, Ian Zimmerman, and Max Zimmerman. They placed fifth during the tournament. Congratulations to the Southmoreland Quiz Team and the excellent effort they put forth in the Mount Pleasant Quiz Conferences and tournaments this year. And three teams of Southmoreland students participated in the Einstein's Minds competition held at Mount Pleasant Senior High School Friday, February sixth. They competed against teams from Mount Pleasant, Penn Trafford, Yoc, and Franklin Regional. After several hours of problem-solving and answering questions that tested our students' knowledge and memory, spatial reasoning, deductive reasoning, and logic, our student were, our students were given, then given, six word Dooku puzzles to solve, all parts of the contest were timed. Awards were given for individual high score as well as best team overall high score. The Southmoreland team of Brendan Hickson, Jacob Smithsola, and Ian Zimmerman took first place for best team overall high score. Michael Conroy took third for, place in the individual high score category. The top three scorers from Southmoreland were Michael Conroy, Anastasia Polakowski, and Mackenzie Blair. Congratulations to all of the Alpha students participating in the Einstein's Minds competition and a job well done. That's all.
I just have one question. Is the Valentine's Dance going on now?
No, um, they can't, they're, they need to.
Okay. Because.
Valentine's Dance nineteenth, right?
Nineteenth. Because I was going to say, if that was the case, I would suggest in the future that we excuse these young people from coming to something like this, so they can attend it.
They'd much rather be with us, we know that.
CWCTC report?
Yes, uh, the J O C met on January twenty-first, we discussed a couple of personnel, personnel issues. The business office manager, retiring candidate of school year, the board voted to eliminate that position and replace him with the business manager. The business manager duties have been spread out over the administrators, so, um, we left us to our business manager of the school. And the supervisor building in grounds will also be retiring candidate of school year. With the recommendation of the administration, we're reconfiguring some maintenance positions, promoting the two maintenance employees, the two team leaders, um, who will replace the building in grounds position, and hiring at least one entry-level custodian and maintenance person, and that'll save, um, some money. And finally, the GDSA project is complete. Just a reminder, that was a six-point-five-million-dollar guaranteed, a new savings project that was started, um, about a year and a half ago. Johnson Controls was a contractor. To some of the highlights for the board members that don't, uh, that weren't here, we voted on it, it was the first major renovation on campus since it was built forty years ago. Nothing was done cosmetically. Um, uh, the GESA project, uh, the roof was totally replaced, HVAC upgrade, upgrades, all boilers were replaced, the lighting, safety, and security systems were also updated. And, uh, that's my report.
Thank you. WIU report?
Uh, we took care of personnel issues. Um, we, uh, approved an agreement between the IU and the IU Education Support Personnel Association, the PSEA, NEA, Classroom Assistance. We approved an agreement with the intermediate, intermediate unit work and the, um, education support personnel, um, and the personal care assistance. Uh, we granted administration permission to offer a retirement incentive policy for qualified members. Um, approved a modification to the nomination and election rules. Uh, approved, um, an IU early intervention calendar for the fifteen, sixteen year, and we granted administration permission to apply for a grant from the Standard Charitable Foundation to develop a vocational program for eighteen to twenty-one-year-olds. That's it.
Thank you.
Is there any update on, wasn't the IU was looking for a new, uh, some buildings or a place for the, any, anything to say on that? How's that going?
Um, it's going, they're actively searching for, we had a meeting after our, our, uh, regular meeting that Mr. Clara and Dr. Monar and, um, was there, was there? Yeah, Mr. Marnell was there. Um, they are actively searching, um, because of the increase in the cost of the building that they're in now, and the fact that they won't let them decrease the amount of time in the lease. So they have several places that they're looking at, a lot of them are, um, religious schools that have shut down. They were looking at two more that, last week, right?
Yeah, but, well, two of the options that they're looking at right now, one of the options is a Clairview North and Clairview South. And one would be, uh, possibly at New Can Arnold, and they're also looking at a site here in Scottdale a- as a possibility. Um, they've also looked at the third floor of our high school, um, but no decision has been made yet, they're still consulting with architects and touring buildings and things of that nature, correct?
Correct.
So, still kind of up in the air.
Um, PSBA liaison report?
Uh, the fifteen-member Basic Education Funding Commission, uh, was formed June tenth, two thousand fourteen, with the passage of House Bill seventeen thirty-eight, and is tasked with coming up with a fair funding formula within a year. To this end, they have been holding meetings across the state, and most recently in central Montgomery County. At that meeting, they discussed the role of vocational schools in public education. This is a wide, uh, I mean, there is a wide disparity and inequity in the current funding formula. The state cannot continue to hold all students and schools to the same high academic standards and performance while the basic ed funding is so unfair, inequitable, and inequitable. Lee Barkett, uh, who is the director of the Bureau of Career and Technical Education at PDE, said that the budget for, um, VOTECs have been sixty-two million for the past six years. So, um, I, I believe that they are, uh, looking for something, um, to be done in that area also. Um, let me preface the following by saying I am just reporting state requirements, and that would be on the subject that has been in the news a lot in the past, uh, few weeks, and that is the measles vaccine. Pennsylvania requires eight vaccines before children can begin kindergarten, and two more doses entering the seventh grade. Parents can obtain exemptions for their children. And Pennsylvania has an eighty-seven percent vaccination rate among kindergarteners, and the state's ninety-six percent vaccination rate among seventh graders is considered good. Uh, the public health experts say a ninety-five percent or higher vaccination rate is needed for quote-unquote herd immunity. Herd immunity means so many people are immune that all illnesses, that, that all, and that, I'm sorry, that an illness has no chance to gain a foothold and begin spreading. The children who can't be immunized for medical or other reasons are safe because the risk of exposure is so low, since everyone around them is immune. But ultimately, it is still the parent's choice. Uh, lastly, um, Peggy, uh, passed out an article at your places there that I thought would, you would find interesting, in light of the occurrences that have taken place here in the last few days. So, well, that ends my report.
Thank you. Uh, superintendents report?
Yeah, a number of things. I just want to give you a, a little update on, on the happenings of last week that Mrs. Bailey referred to as well. Um, on Tuesday, there was a bomb threat that was written on a restroom wall, boys restroom. Uh, the building was evacuated, students were placed in a holding area, and then, beginning at about twelve fifty, um, they were dismissed based on, on the time of day that this all occurred. State police, Westmoreland County Emergency Management, the Westmoreland County K-9 officers responded. The building was swept and cleared, evidence was collected, and the investigation continues even as we speak. Um, Wednesday, the following day, a second bomb threat was found on a girls' restroom wall. Wednesday morning, the building was evacuated. Again, state police, Westmoreland County Emergency Management, K-9 officers from Westmoreland County, and the city of Pittsburgh responded. The building was swept and cleared, evidence was collected, the investigation continues. After the building was cleared, based on, again, on the time of day and the fact that the building had been cleared, students returned and resumed their day on a modified schedule. A third bomb threat was discovered late this morning, February twelfth, in a boys' restroom at Southmoreland High School. Uh, thanks to the vigilance of the high school faculty, staff, and administration, we were able to use video surveillance to isolate the student who had been in the restroom since the principal had checked it minutes earlier. Within minutes, the individual was confined to the office and a confession occurred. State police responded and are planning to file criminal charges. The student will also face school disciplinary action. Because this individual was apprehended so quickly after the threat was written, and because the threat was determined to be unfounded, it was not necessary to evacuate the building. We have requested state police presence at the building for the next few days. So that's, that's an update on, on where we are, uh, you know, we're, we're giving as much information as we can and, and as we have. Uh, right now, there, there's not a whole lot of information to give, because again, there are, you know, police investigations, um, that, that are ongoing. Um, pardon?
School.
Yeah, the school investigation as well, so we're cooperating closely with the state police. So, uh, that's the update on, on where we are this week. Um, on a better note, one of our band students, a French horn player, Jason Monroe, has advanced from district to region orchestra. So we are requesting permission for him and Mr. Jim Henigan, our element, our elementary instrumental instructor, to attend the region festival, that's March twelfth through fourteenth in Erie, Pennsylvania. So we would entertain a motion to that effect, please.
Need a motion?
Certainly.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Love, questions? Questions from the audience, non-agenda item? Mrs. Bailey?
Is there, if you may not be able to answer my question, um, do we know or have an idea that the student that confessed?
I'm sorry, it's, it's a question on this particular Jason Monroe for district.
Is that district?
Right. Districts. No more questions from the audience? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent.
This is just an informational item for the board, um, there's been some new legislation. Um, anyone who works in a school now must receive updated clearances every three years. So, uh, we're in the process of, of getting our list together, and those whose clearances are more than three years old will be required to update their clearances, and we will need to have those on file, um, in order for those individuals to remain employed here. So if you hear anything about that, um, that's, that's what that's all about, having to do with, um, excuse me, a lot of the, uh, the child abuse legislation and the past, the trash legislation and so on, that, that has occurred lately. So, that, kind of protect our, our students. Um, we received word, uh, this week that, uh, we received a twenty-five-hundred-dollar grant. Uh, congratulations, Janet Vance in Westmoreland County has selected your organization to receive a twenty-five-hundred-dollar donation from America's Farmers Grow Communities. We recognize that organizations like yours are vital to the development of rural communities across America, and we salute you for doing great work in your community. Um, this is, um, obviously, uh, you know, through the Monsanto Fund, and, uh, these funds will be used to, um, integrate, uh, science-related literature into our, into our science classrooms. And the, uh, last part of my report, um, as soon as this meeting is adjourned, I will be proceeding to my office and announcing that we will have a two-hour weather-related delay tomorrow morning. So you heard it here first.
Slasters report?
Uh, just a brief, uh, comment, um, the, one of the Sunday papers had a article in it about a proposed constitutional amendment, um, there's a bill in the legislature to, um, go forward with the referendum if it passes. That would permit the state legislature to be the ultimate decider of the formula and the language for who qualifies as a nonprofit for exemption from real estate taxation. And, um, if that passes and, and there's a vote on it, it will be, you know-
That's March twelfth through fourteenth in Erie, Pennsylvania. So we would entertain a motion to that effect, please.
Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Beistel, second. Second by Mrs. Love. Questions? Questions from the audience, non-agenda item? Mrs. Peter?
There, you may not be able to answer my question. Do we know or have an idea that the student confessed?
I'm sorry, it's a question on this particular Jason Monroe for district?
Is that district?
Right. Districts? No more questions from the audience? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel? Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent.
This is just an informational item for the board. There's been some new legislation. Anyone who works in a school now must receive updated clearances every three years. So we're in the process of getting our list together, and those whose clearances are more than three years old will be required to update their clearances, and we will need to have those on file in order for those individuals to remain employed here. So if you hear anything about that, that's, that's what that's all about, having to do with, excuse me, a lot of the child abuse legislation and the past, the trash legislation and so on that has occurred lately. So kind of protect our students. We received word this week that we received a twenty-five-hundred-dollar grant. Congratulations. Janet Vance in Westmoreland County has selected your organization to receive a twenty-five-hundred-dollar donation from America's Farmers Grow Communities. We recognize that organizations like yours are vital to the development of rural communities across America, and we salute you for doing great work in your community. This is obviously through the Monsanto fund, and these funds will be used to integrate science-related literature into our, into our science classrooms. And the last part of my report, as soon as this meeting is adjourned, I will be proceeding to my office and announcing that we will have a two-hour weather-related delay tomorrow morning. So you heard it here first.
Solicitors report?
Just a brief comment. One of the Sunday papers had an article in it about a proposed constitutional amendment. There's a bill in the legislature to go forward with a referendum if it passes that would permit the state legislature to be the ultimate decider of the formula and the language for who qualifies as a nonprofit for exemption from real estate taxation. And if that passes and there's a vote on it, it will be an important thing on the ballot as affecting, I'm not sure what the effect would be on our school district, but it can have significant effects on districts either who receive payment in lieu of taxes or who would become eligible to have more kinds of properties be eligible for exemptions. So that's something on a, both as a board level and as an individual voter, that we in Pennsylvania need to be paying attention to in the near future.
Thank you. Citizens comments? Same rules as earlier.
Hi, Jan Kiefer, six to eight Homestead Avenue. As I said before, Monsanto is one of the most destructive deadly corporations on the earth, and that's not a factor in your school policy. That doesn't surprise me. I'm here to talk tonight about the power plant that's going in by the Yawk School District.
This, according to policy, has to be items that are in regard to Southmoreland School District.
Well, okay, then watch the clock carefully then because I'm not going to spend my time arguing, but I will tie it in then if that's what you're asking me to do right now.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last.
Are you asking me to tell you why I'm going to talk about the power plant?
No, I'm saying that has nothing to do with our.
Well, the.
School district.
Excuse me, but it does, if you would. All right, let me, the Yawk School District reflects our school district in many ways in geography and, am I, am I already here? Am I going to get arrested?
Mike, I think he asked you a question.
I don't think so.
Related to Southmoreland somehow.
Pardon me?
Related to Southmoreland.
I just did, I thought. I said the Yawk School District has a lot of similar demographics as the Southmoreland and they border us, and there's an issue that ties from the Yawk School District to our school district that I'd like to talk about tonight.
Well, the power plant really doesn't have anything to do with.
Well, the smoke, I don't, my five minutes hasn't started. I'm informing you right now. If the smoke comes off the power plant and travels one point eight miles into our school district, I think it does.
Proximity, okay.
All right. Five minutes now?
Go ahead.
Thank you. And I got that Monsanto dig in for free. All right, so as I, as I say, the Yawk School District reflects us in many ways, and early in the process of this power plant, and I've been working with it real deeply, this is a seven-hundred-million-dollar project, it's two, it's right by the two schools, the Yawk Middle School and the Yawk Primary School. And this smoke is going to drop on these students. And the reason I'm here, and I think you'll understand a little better right now, is we, you know, work this issue from all angles. Not one school teacher, not one student, not one administrator, no one from that school has come out with our group. Early on in the process, the industry people have approached the superintendent in particular and people in the school district, we've learned, and it just is beyond my, it's beyond my imagination how a power plant less than a mile from the two schools that's dumping significant amounts of toxins and not one student, not one teacher, not one administrator, not one board director has come forward to, to work, to work, to bring the education to the community. You know, that's, that's really my point tonight. And then I, and to farther tie it in here before I had to prove what I was talking about, East Huntington, of course, is an environmental justice community because of the, largely because of the garbage dump that's still giving off smells here. And the Everson Chemical Plant is coming into our school district, so there's another tie, and I don't want to be put through this every time I come up here. But we need an education period to get out to the community and explain to people what this chemical plant is that's coming here. We lost that opportunity with the power plant, and that was our big problem up there. We could not get into the school. We could not get the students mobilized, we couldn't get anyone in the school because the industry got to and indoctrinated them first. So that education period now needs to be starting for the chemical plant that's coming on the road here. And just in one more tie here, the vaccination issue that was just brought up that pertains to the school that was on the agenda here tonight, we need the education period on that too because someday, you know, we have hundreds of vaccinations that are in the pipeline. Someday, they're going to come in and say, you know, all the teachers are going to be vaccinated, you're going to be vaccinated for dental disease, you know. The day's going to come when we're going to, we're going to lose our, our rights are going to be challenged, they're challenged in certain industries in America today. And the school is front and center on this vaccination issue, and if someone wants to discuss that with me, I would like to have that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer.
Any more citizens' comments? Hearing none, anything, any board members?
Mike, I have to.
Mr. Polakowski?
Schedule a building and grounds meeting.
Okay.
So anytime after next week, whatever's convenient for administration. If we have that at the school.
Yes. What day are you looking? Thursday evenings are generally good for me, but I can't speak for the rest. How about the board?
That's fine. What were you projecting? Which day? Thursday evening?
Yeah, that would be.
The week after. The weekend.
Twenty-sixth is the week after.
That's not it. Just not next week.
So building and grounds.
There's a chance that I may not be available on that date, but Dr. Scott would be able to cover.
So February twenty-sixth, the building and grounds? What time?
Seven.
Seven.
I'm sorry.
Seven.
Six, six-thirty might be better.
Okay.
Is that the Junbee? Make sure there's no.
That's why six-thirty might be better.
So February twenty-sixth, six-thirty at the Southmore High School Gymnasium? At the gymnasium, Jason?
Yeah, meet at the high school gym, six-thirty. February twenty-sixth. Right.
Anything else from any other?
We'll double check in if there's an event scheduled for that day. We may have to reschedule, but I don't think there is.
If you park around the back, if you park around the back, we'll have it open.
Right.
So you can come right down to the gym.
Anything else from any other board members? Motion to adjourn? Next by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by, motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second by Mrs. Love. All those in favor say aye, aye. All those opposed? Thank you, good night.